5:06. Um, roll call. Shay. Bonnie?
Hi.
You're here.
Oh, Bonnie, yes, I'm here.
Moore. Absent. Alan? Absent. Coleman is here. Libsack? Inquist? Joanne?
Inquist is here, thank you.
Sarah Jones?
I'm here.
Veronica Martin?
Hi, Sarah. Didn't see you before.
And? Isabel? Christina? Perfect. Um, who is our uh, city council liaison?
Angie Nelson-Dutch.
Okay. Is she here?
I don't.
Yes, I am.
Oh, you are? Oh, good.
Oh, hi, Angie.
Yeah, hi. I'm like, yes, I am. I'm sitting.
And thank you for being our liaison.
Yeah.
No problem.
Appreciate it.
Well, just know this. I chose you. I asked you to lead on this here, so.
Thank you so much. Well, we're lucky to have you.
Okay, moving on to the approval of minutes from January 21st. Did you guys all receive it?
Yes, again.
And do we have a quorum? I'm sorry, I was not paying attention.
One.
Oh, wait a minute. I bet we don't. One, two, three, four.
I don't think we do.
Yes, we do, yeah. We have Nicole, Joanne, Bonnie, Christina, and Sarah. That's five. So that's our quorum.
You just named four.
Bonnie, Joanne, Nicole, Christina, and Sarah.
Yeah, you didn't. I didn't hear Nicole before. Okay, fantastic. Well, then I'll move to accept the minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, treasurer's report will hold off until if Shar shows up, or?
No, she is not coming. She
Not coming?
She wrote this morning and said she would not be here.
So we will wait until next time? So old business, um, poetry contest winners.
Yes, yes, yes.
Would anyone like to announce that?
Yeah, hi. I'm so glad so many of you could make it. Um, so we'll start with, um, Ray Lynn um, in our fifth grade, sixth grade band, um, first place. So Ray Lynn, would you like to read your poem? Who's Ray Lynn here? Is Ray Lynn on?
Yes.
I think they're having some mic issues. So Ray, Ray Lynn and, um, Raiden, I'll check back in with you, okay? Um, and then we have on next, um, Grace Dillard with the seventh, eighth grade band, um, for second place. Would you like to read your poem?
Um, yeah, I can.
That'd be wonderful. Thank you.
What Would I March For?, a poem by Grace Dillard. What would I march for? What rights would I choose? I think I would march for LGBTQ. Our rights matter. It's not disgusting or weird. Transgender people deserve the same treatment. Stop taking their rights just because they're different. Please, just listen. Stop hating homosexuals for loving their own gender. Why does it matter? It's just love, of course. Gender queer, they don't need a specific gender. Just let them be happy as they are. Asexuals, only a romantic relationship is perfectly fine. Or not even that, you don't need love to live life. Leave them alone. It's their preference, not yours. We are the colors of the rainbow, the most powerful and true. Give us our rights. What did we do wrong? Let us be ourselves so we can all get along.
That was excellent. That was wonderful.
You give a little clap there. That was great. Thank you so much for sharing that.
She read it so well, too.
We have, um, our next guest here, um, correct me if I mispronounce your name, Jayana with the 11th, 12th grade group.
Yes.
Jayana, second place for that group. Would you like to read your poem?
What Would I March For? Black Lives Matter. They wake up wondering, wondering if they'll see another day. Gunshots and sirens, they all run and begin to pray. Pulled over for no reason, we began to question the system. Is killing a black person for their race suddenly the new victim? Being taught how to do certain things a certain way, all because the color of my skin. Never argue with the police, keep your hands on the dashboard, invisible at all times. Stay calm and explain every movement. Yes, sir, no, sir, and thank you. We are taught one wrong move can mean life or death, but that choice ultimately, ultimately isn't in our hands. Because innocent or guilty, our life isn't in their hands. imprisoned by the color of my skin, we will keep fighting until this all comes to an end. To stand up and demand for change is our choice. Black Lives Matter, we all need to use our voice. Citywide rallies and chaotic protests, all for one cause. Stop killing our people and change the laws. If I could remove my skin before walking out the door, will I not be judged and you not see color anymore?
Very nice. Excellent. Enjoy.
Thank you.
People read their poems, too.
Sounds great when they read their, their own poetry out loud.
Doesn't it? Isn't it wonderful?
And then we have Leah Lawson, 11th grade, um, with the 11th, 12th grade band, first place. Um, is Leah here? I think I saw her.
Yeah, she is.
Would, would you like to read your poem, Leah?
Uh, yeah. The Worries of a Bob-Bone. Yet another innocent black face on the news, killed by the pigs. Anxiety begins to override my mind and worry seems to sit. What if scenarios are played on loop? My, my leg bounces restlessly as I ponder white supremacy and the innocent black people that died unexpectedly. What if we weren't outcasts? What if we were equal? What if there were no broadcasts, so riots instead were peaceful? Is this thought as crazy as it seems? Are you not tired of the bloodshed and screams? Tired of dead black kings and queens, or can a peaceful world only exist in my dreams?
Wonderful. Someone's okay through here.
Very nice. And then, um, we'll go back to, um, Raiden?
Fox.
And Ray, Ray Lynn. How's our mic working? Let me see. So where, I, I don't know if it's just me, but I'm having trouble hearing anything that you're saying. Um, if you would like me to read your poems, give me a thumbs up. No, thumbs down?
I would say maybe.
Well, thank you.
If she could try to log off and log back in. Oh, okay.
Okay, so, um, do you want to mute your mic back, um, Raiden? So I got a thumbs up from Ray Lynn. So Ray Lynn was for sixth grade, um, first place, What Would I March For? Equality, equality for girls and boys to play professional basketball together. I'll change the way the game is played and viewed. This will broaden players' skill set on and off the court. Controversies of coed teams will dimmer. Being in a world where we can play together without any limitations is something worth marching for. And then Raiden, how about you? Thumbs up or down? Do you want me to share yours? Hold it up a little higher. I can't quite tell what you want, Raiden, sorry. Okay, so your mic's not muted, so I don't, I don't know what you're saying, so give me a thumbs up by your face, or a thumbs down. Can I share that? All right, Raiden. Sorry about that. Sometimes these microphones are a little iffy. So Raiden was for eighth grade, um, first place. What Would I March For? Why must you take a child's family away, knowing that it will tear them every day? Ripping a family apart really tears it at the heart. No more. Deportation is slowly slitting the nation. They never wanted oppression, and yet they are forced into suppression. No more. Separating children from their mothers and fathers is not the answer. It creates anger and remorse. Something a child should not encounter. I'll march for a better solution for our nation's future to have unification, not deportation. Those were great, guys.
Oh, wonderful. Outstanding. Absolutely, every single one. Thank you so much for coming tonight.
All right, those, those are our winners.
Very good. All of you. Thank you.
For sharing your, your thoughts and your words and for, for, for what we all need to do is step up, so appreciate, appreciate you guys.
I give you the snaps, the snaps, and the snaps when they do poetry, you know, and poetry night, they snap, so they, all of them.
Hands are so dry, but I'll try and snap, too.
Well, maybe we can find a
That was, was that? Everyone? Jayana?
Yes, that was, I believe I got everyone, did I?
Great, great.
Yeah.
Fay, do you, are you going to take over now? We had just started it.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to thank everyone for joining and everyone for being on time. My computer crashed as soon as I, um, tried to get on and it had to reboot on, and I don't know what happened. But I think everyone and the poems, I did think, I, I think I heard all the poems. They were excellent. I definitely can see why, um, you guys received one of those votes from the, uh, various commissioners. And, um, I really appreciate you taking the time, each one of you for taking your time to, um, do your, um, vote. At this, um, time, we're gonna, um, I know we're gonna try to, uh, post some on our, is that okay with all the persons that wrote them on our Facebook page and our, um, uh, page? Is that good, everybody? Do you mind? If we post those? Okay, thank you for giving us the approvals so that we can post them on our page so that others may, uh, read them and hopefully next year, if we do something similar, we'll have more participants. But we definitely want more young people to get involved in the community and in the commission, especially the Women's Commission. Uh, we appreciate you for, um, following up. And we, Sarah, thank you for such an awesome job on, um, hooking everybody up and getting everything together. We really appreciate you. We'd give you a hand clap, too. Each one of you guys were just awesome. We appreciate you. Thank you. If you want, wish to stay on, you may stay on for the remainder of our meeting. And if you have other things that you have to do, I know, you know, school being back in session and all, um, you know, not just virtual, but in person, we understand if you do leave us, but if you, if you feel free to stay on if you desire. Um, at this time, um, we have, um, Kayla with the Anita King Project. Um, we, um, for those that might not remember, um, Kayla was gonna go to California and, and, um, research and, and get information on Anita King, who was a resident of Michigan City back in, what, the 1800s, Kayla?
I know.
So, um, so it's very interesting. Uh, she was a stunt person, I believe. So anyway, I'm gonna turn the presentation over to Kayla, and she's gonna present to us what she's gonna do instead of what she was gonna do before. Thank you, Kayla, for being with us.
Thank you so much for having me. And first, I just want to say how incredible all of those poems were. I am an English major at PNW, and that was just great writing, so.
Yes, it was.
And I also want to thank you guys for having me so much. Um, and I will share my screen so I can share my presentation. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
I can.
Yep.
All right, so this project, um, began for me in the fall of 2019. Um, and our main goal was to gain recognition for a local hero right here in Indiana. So Anita King was born Anna Kepin in 1884, right here in Michigan City. She did all of her own stunts and her films and her races. She was a race car driver. She was a fierce women's activist, a silent movie actress, and racehorse owner. One of the greatest accomplishments to Anita's name was that she was the first woman to drive across the United States alone. At the time that she did this, married women were not even allowed to have their own passports separate from their husbands. Anita was continuously determined, and she did all of her own stunts and her films. So as I said, Anita was a fierce activist for women's rights. She was one of the earliest female actresses in Hollywood. Um, she was a female race car driver in a time when there was no female race car drivers at all on the 1916 Indy 500 roster. She was the first female to drive alone, and she started the YWCA for women, beginning their careers in California so that women would have a safe place to go, um, while building themselves up and pursuing their careers. She also gave frequent presentations to empower women. She spoke to Girl Scouts across the country when she performed her famous drive. Here you see a photo of the car in which she completed the drive, and she's parked in front of the Princess Theater in Iowa. The night that she arrived, she presented in front of 50 Girl Scouts and encouraged them to pursue their dream. So last year, your commission granted me $500 towards this project to allow me to travel to California and retrieve artifacts to bring back to Anita's hometown of Michigan City. Because of COVID, travel to California isn't possible at this time. However, thankfully, we are still able to accomplish our project. I'm here to ask the commission to allow the funds to be used to have the artifacts shipped here instead. At this time, there will be an exhibit opening in Anita's honor at the LaPorte County Historical Society, tentatively in May. This will coincide with the unveiling of a sign that we are also dedicating in Anita's honor in Michigan City. In this exhibit, there will be original postcards from Anita's drive, costumes, posters, photographs, a documentary about her life, and a Kissel car on display at this exhibit. Anita's great niece, Lucian Boardman, is contributing some of the pieces. The Kissel car shipment cost is $800 total. The car is in the Wisconsin Auto Museum at this time and will be shipped here to LaPorte County and then returned after the exhibit. The commission's original $500 grant will help, um, us accomplish this. Additionally, we are raising funds to digitize Anita's original films, which have been located at the Library of Congress. The documentary mentioned above is also being filmed as part of this project at the Barker Mansion. Lastly, we are creating a complete written history of Anita King's life. Here is a photo of the car that will be on display. Um, the collector is very, very excited about this project and enthusiastic about Anita's mission. Um, they've named their car Annie and have agreed to allow us to not only display it, but to decorate it with dust and stickers so that it looks like this picture from the Princess Theater.
Kayla, is it the actual car that she drove across the country?
It's a, it's a car from the same time period, um, but it's not the actual car.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, it's in great condition.
Is it?
Yeah.
So the completion of this project will create a written history of a great local hero. Renew art and artifacts from Michigan City. Help promote continued efforts for women's empowerment and allow us to pass this history down and add historical value to Michigan City overall. Thank you so much for your time today.
So I have a question. Um, how long will the exhibit be, the car be at, um, the Historical Society?
So that, at this point, the collector has agreed to allow the car to be there for the entire month of May to promote Anita's history and coincide with the unveiling of the sign. Um, but he let me know that if the exhibit goes well and we can reevaluate at the end of May, and he might let it stay for the rest of the summer.
I have a question as well. Um, as far as the signage, the sign that is being unveiled, where is that gonna reside?
Yeah, so I'm working with the Parks Department right now and the mayor's office, and right now they're looking at putting it by the Lighthouse Museum.
Well, I think, I think this is a wonderful approach to what you wanted to do. I, I'm having it here is going to be so important for all of us, and I'm just delighted. And I think, you know, I, it's great timing. Uh, people can get out in May. They're gonna be very excited to go and see it, that's for sure.
Yes, thank you so much.
Yes, and thank you for all that hard work and all that research and, and even the PowerPoint presentation is a beautiful, is a beautiful presentation. We really appreciate it.
Thanks.
You're using the money wisely. Thank you.
Kayla, do you have any, um, programs that you will be going into the schools and sharing her story, or this, how would people see the documentary? Is it just at the museum?
The documentary, um, is currently going to be a part of the exhibit as well. Uh, Mr. Johnson from the museum is putting a TV next to the exhibit to showcase not only the documentary, but some of the films that we're digitizing right now. Um, additionally, the film will circulate in my current honors capstone class for my graduation. Um, and we've currently entered a competition with John Hopkins University, um, where they'll also showcase the film, should we be accepted.
Wonderful. Yeah, Kayla, I think you made an excellent choice in what to ask us to, you know, and what you're requesting now, because we thought that, you know, helping you fly out to, helping pay for the flight out to California was a great idea, but this is, this is probably even better, because it's something we all know now that we're gonna go see when it's here, so, thank you.
I definitely agree. Yeah. Go ahead, it's coming here.
Are there any other questions? Any students have any questions? Okay, all right, we thank you, um, Kayla. And also, we offer you to say that if you wish to stay, you may stay, uh, for the rest of our meeting. It is a public meeting. If you have other things, we do understand. Um, but we do appreciate all of your work and, and I would have just pulled my hair out and gave up, but you, boy John, so I really, we really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
There was a question by one of our poets asking about a prize. Which prize did you mean, honey? It was, it was Raiden. There was a question that came up.
Oh, for the poem, for the contest, poetry contest.
Was it the poetry contest? Is that true?
All right, Bonnie, what did we decide on the, uh, how we were gonna do the prizes?
We, we were not, we were not able to offer prizes, just recognition by putting it on the, um, on our website and, and here on this.
And this is recorded, in fact, um, it, they might even be able to get a copy of this?
Yes, Caleb, Caleb, uh, you know, sent a chat message and said that, um, it would, it could be posted on Facebook. And he will send us a link to that.
So that, that is quite a prize.
Did we advertise a monetary prize?
No.
No.
No. Okay.
Okay, we just want to honor it if we did, so. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, so, uh, we thank you again, um, Kayla. I don't know how to pronounce your last name. I don't want to mess it up. Uh, for being with us and for your presentation. An awesome presentation. Um, and since I came on late, did we have a treasurer's report?
Yeah. The treasurer is absent.
Okay, okay. So we'll probably get that at a later date, because the C Hall has still been closed anyway, so uh, she might not have been able to get, um, get it sent electronically. So, uh, so we're at our new business, our discussion on the Speaker's Bureau. Bonnie?
Okay, uh, for Women's History Month, last year, uh, the library had applied for a grant from Indiana Humanities to pay for a speaker from the Speaker's Bureau list, um, for women's suffrage for this state. And, um, that, and she had gotten, the library did receive the grant award that was paying for the, um, speaker's fees. But then, of course, it was the end of March and had to be canceled. So it turns out now that that speaker that we had, um, arranged for last year is able to, um, make a presentation this year, and Indiana Humanities is, um, still going to pay a speaker's fee to her now for this, but she will, she's available both, um, Saturday, March 13th, and Thursday, March 25th. So the library now is figuring out, the library will host the meeting on Zoom, the presentation. Um, and the speaker is Dr. Janine Giordano Drake. She's a history professor at Indiana University at Bloomington, and she was going to talk about the, um, all of the other causes that suffragists were involved in. There were a lot of, lot of things, not, um, anyway. And so she's gonna talk about that, the many areas that, um, suffragists were, especially, um, I think, um, women's labor, labor relations, and, um, so she'll be talking about that, but Robin Cone at the library now is, um, figuring out the schedule. It'll be one of those two dates, and then our responsibility as co-host is to promote it, so we can put a notice on our webpage and we can all notify everybody we know um, to watch it, but, uh, so it'll be either Thursday evening or Saturday, Saturday afternoon.
So would you give me the dates again, please?
Either, it, it will be either, um, Saturday, March 13th, or Thursday, March 25th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that will be our observance of Women's History Month, as we couldn't do much else this year.
This is, this is very nice. I'm looking forward to it.
Yes.
As I was last year.
Yeah, right. Um, do you think, would it be all right if we would invite, um, League of Women Voters to also co-host it, because they were going to last year, too?
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure it's fine. I'm sure, uh, we'll Well, I'm sure, I'm sure it's fine. I'm sure, uh, we'll, you know, we could bring it up to the board, Bonnie, but I'm sure.
Is it?
Would you like it to do it?
Okay, with the Women's Commission if we do that.
Yes, it's okay with us.
Okay.
Okay. Should we take a vote on that? Should we take a vote or just, uh, everybody's, that's in favor, say aye?
For what? For the presentation or for the League, League of Women Voters?
For the presentation, do we, we don't have to take a vote on it, right? Cause we've already planned it.
Yes.
And with the League joining, we're all in favor of that. The more the merrier, right?
Yeah. I'm going to, we invite, uh, Dr. Drake to make a presentation here on Zoom through Michigan City Public Library in March to observe Women's History Month.
Can I, uh, get a second?
A second.
That was.
Veronica.
Oh, Veronica. Thank you, Veronica. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? If, uh, all in favor has it, the motion is carried.
Now, will this be open to the public too? Can we include a?
It's a Zoom, yeah, it's a Zoom, um, presentation and the library will promote it. And they have an email list of like five hundred people that they'll send it to. And then League of Women Voters has an email list of about one hundred people. Sort of be promoted to them too and, um, yeah. And all the, all the promotional apparatus that the library has. I think they have an article in the newspaper once a month or something. So they'll be doing most of the PR, so.
Wonderful. Sounds good.
Thank you all.
Okay, um, what's that one? Next we have. Sorry. What's next on your agenda? I don't have it.
Public comments.
Do we have anybody still from the public? Um, okay, anybody come, go ahead.
Um, this is my first meeting, so I just wanna say, uh, I look forward to working with all of you, um, this year. I look a little different cause my, I changed my hair. I do that a lot, so.
I was gonna say. I'm, I'm ready for anything you come up with.
But I look forward to working with you and anything that I can do to support, um, your efforts and, uh, and, and move projects and programs forward. So, uh, I just appreciate being here today.
Yes, I forgot to, I thought everybody, I forgot to, it now, now said, uh, you are our new liaison instead of Mr. Fitzgerald Patrick because of his new position. But thank you, uh, for accepting the appointment. Anyone else?
Do, Faye, I'm sorry, we, did we vote on Kayla's, um, do we have to vote on Kayla's proposal to, um, or do we just approve that?
Is there's an additional three hundred dollars that you, that she's, I think, is she requesting the additional three hundred to, to, for the shipping?
No, we have a limit of five hundred dollars, so.
Oh.
So that's what she's, yeah, that's what she's giving.
Yeah, I was wondering about that too. I thought, is it a firm five hundred limit? Or can we support that additional three hundred?
That was in the ordinance, I believe, the five hundred. Uh, Joanne, can you help? I think that was when they did the ordinance, they limited us to the five hundred.
I seem to remember, but I, 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 you know, my memory could be. I think we need to look at what language we have written.
Okay.
Then I would feel much better about it, but I think.
I can.
Can be an extension.
I believe it says that, um, we can make exceptions, but.
I look real fast, I have it.
But that generally.
She also did mention that they're working on raising additional funds, um, but I, I can't remember if it was for the shipping or for something else.
Yeah, she mentioned they were gonna run, I was gonna mention that we could all donate individually if, even if we didn't vote as, as a commission. She said that they were gonna raise additional funds for the shipping.
Now, I, my question is who's they?
She, oh, I don't know who the they is. I guess the project, the people that are working with her at the Historical Society.
And I, I don't know, I don't know if Purdue is involved. I, you know, that's, yeah, I, I don't, I, I honestly don't know.
Probably should clarify that. I don't know if she's still on, but.
Yeah, she, last year when she presented, her professor came with her and they were working together on it. I think it's like her senior class, I don't know, uh, project or something that she's doing, but it was all being supervised and arranged, I think, by.
Presentation, I, it made me think that that's what she was requesting, um, the ability to use those funds for shipping, but that she needed additional money. I didn't know.
Is it a way we could get her back on the line? She's not on it. Don't know if anyone has a way to.
She did put on that, um, what, what was on the screen said that, uh, the five hundred dollars from us would be used toward that eight hundred, that, toward the shipping of the car specifically, she said that.
I, I would think that you might need to, at least, did somebody, um, did somebody move to, um, authorize the switch for, for shipping versus, um, her going out there? You probably should, just put it on.
I'm sorry, Angie, I didn't mean to cut you off. That was why she did this presentation. Well, instead of going out there, that's why she changed it to, uh, doing the, uh, getting the car here and doing the, uh, changing it to a digital presentation.
Right, but she requesting the care point said that she would like permission to use the five hundred towards shipping, um, instead of her traveling. So you'll need to vote on it.
Yeah. Agreed. Our, our ordinance, I'm not saying anything about maximums or spending.
It does, um, it was, uh, Michigan City, um, Commission for Women Request for Donation Guidelines. It was approved February fifteenth, twenty eighteen. Um, and it said that, um, the Michigan City Commission for Women accepts projects, project proposals from organizations that primarily serve women, youth and families. The commission can use its fund to pay for the following purposes. Materials, supplies, education to the public, including promotional, educational, training supplies and for community events. Applications are limited to five hundred dollars each. The commission may, at its discretion, choose to fund special projects at a higher limit.
Well, tonight we didn't determine what the higher limit was. Uh, at least I didn't hear that.
Yeah, you said eight, eight hundred, but we don't know if she needed the other three hundred. She didn't.
That's right, that's right. Yeah, I'm not.
You didn't ask us for the additional three hundred. It was just that, that, that fee is eight hundred, but, um, so I think we should just approve, um, the five hundred dollars for, um, the shipment of the car from travel to California.
Yep.
So you're making that into a motion, Christina?
Yes.
So Christina's making a motion, um, that we approved the five hundred for the shipment of the car. Can we get a second?
I'll second then.
That's Joanne?
Yes.
For the record keeper?
Mm-hmm.
All in favors? Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any nays? None. So the motion is carried. And then I think Bonnie, we could find out if she does, uh, how, how she's going about with the extra fundraising and if we can help in, in some manner. Uh, you could send us an email if you don't mind. And since you have all her contact information and, uh, was working with her from last year to this year.
I just emailed her too a couple of minutes ago and asked if she can return to the, to this call.
Okay, okay.
Yes, and answered, yeah.
Yeah, I, 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 I know that there's a fee to enter the museum and I just wonder if they could, might be an additional fee for that particular exhibit. I, I don't know what's, what the plan is, but there are all possibilities, all kinds of possibilities.
At this point, we don't even know with COVID if they're gonna, how many people they're gonna allow to come in, you know, to the museum or whatever. So, um, so hopefully we'll, we'll find out and we'll get an email, uh, from Bonnie if she doesn't come back on. And, um, and then we could find other ways of supporting, um, the event.
Right.
Yeah, any other, uh, council, I mean commissioner, uh, comments?
Yes, um, yes, um, just wanted to bring up something, uh, uh, specific to Indiana at this time. I know that, um, all of you through school or another, maybe as early as your elementary level, heard about redistricting, knew that it followed redistricting. I mean, especially when you learned about division of senators in the House and how many people are so, and, and and how we distribute those votes and, and numbers based on redistricting. And, and that comes about every ten years after we have the census. Well, um, the League of Women Voters not only, uh, is well-known for bringing voters and encouraging people to vote, but we also try and educate people. Um, redistricting in Indiana is, is a very complicated situation. And I don't think most people realize it. Uh, and it is not always fair, not at all. And it's, uh, sometimes extremely biased. And, uh, and, and that is true of both parties that have been involved in it through the years. So, uh, there's a great deal going on now about redistricting. And I wanted to point out that, uh, we are working, the League is working very closely with Common Cause. I'm very proud of that, that we have taken on redistricting problems throughout the United States. That's our national organization that does that. Uh, and, uh, they have had Supreme Court decisions and so on. We work closely with the NAACP on some of those issues as well as Common Cause. And we have been relatively successful. Um, there are a number of things going on and will be going on in Indiana to help educate all of us. And we're gonna be involved in that. The, the League is going to have quite a large gathering on the twentieth of March. And we are very excited about it. Uh, we will have a panel discussion. We'll, we'll get more information out to you. I won't, I won't go into detail right now. But on the ninth of March, uh, we'd like you to come to our dinner with the League. Of course, it's virtual now. There'll be any food, but we can serve up a lot of good information. And on that day, we are going to have, um, a, uh, very well-known presenter from Common Cause. And, uh, we're very thrilled about the entire event. Um, and, uh, we, we went on her first name, Vaughn. Help me, Bonnie.
Julia Vaughn.
Yeah.
Julia Vaughn is coming.
Yeah, Julia Vaughn. And I'm sure you've all heard of her and, uh, and what is happening, um, throughout Indiana. And, uh, so that day you'll be able to find out more of our plans for the twentieth as well. We'll, we'll let you more, more know about that, know more about that as we approach it. But we certainly hope you can join us for dinner with the League on the ninth.
So is that gonna be a link sent out to, or is it just gonna be in the paper? How do we, do we have to register, pre-register?
Probably. We haven't, haven't gone into that much detail, but probably. We, uh, uh, we certainly want to keep track of how many people we're real, real proud to get a large group for. She's an outstanding person, uh, not only very articulate and, and good spokesperson, but she's extremely knowledgeable. And, um, we're thrilled that she will give us that time, uh, that evening. So we'll, we'll be, uh, spreading the word, uh, to all of you.
How can someone register for this event or get the link?
We'll get information out to register, yeah. Be, it'll be, it'll be sent out. We haven't quite decided.
No, or just contact you.
And then, as I said, on the twentieth too, we want you to hold that date too. That's a town hall meeting and it's, uh, it'll be a larger, larger presentation. We will have a panel. I won't list the name of all the panel people at this point, but I think you will be very impressed.
Nicole, would you like to be added to the email list for the League? Not, not, we have a member list and then we have another, a big list of like a hundred people if you wanna get the notices about these two meetings.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, I'll take care of that. Thank you.
Me too. You can add me, Bonnie.
Okay. Christina, you was that Christina?
Okay.
And of course you are all welcome to join the League. Uh, people used to think there had to be a special invitation to join the League. We are open to all men and women joining the League. Yes, then. We have had, we have had male members since the mid seventies or early seventies. It's the nineteen seventies.
Veronica, did you have something?
Who, who are you asking?
Oh, Veronica. I thought Veronica was getting ready to say something.
Yes.
Oh, oh, okay, thank you. Anybody else? Well, I wanna go back to the young lady that asked about, um, were we gonna give them a monetary, um, you know, monetary for the presentation, for the poetry or whatever. And I'm, from thinking about the last time of a treasurer's report, I think we could afford to give the, um, first place in each category something, um, for participating. So would do, I'd like to open it up for discussion.
I felt like one time you were handing certificates as something.
He had long discussions on this for quite a while. That's my memory, Bonnie. Is that yours too?
Yeah, but whether we should reward him?
I wa, I was hoping we would give, um, you know, some kind of monetary prize or something. But then everybody thought that we should just offer recognition for it. But.
I was thinking at least for the next, if we do another contest, um, because we did have quite a good turnout considering all of the craziness that went on with, um, the schools being closed and COVID and all of that. Um, I would suggest if, if anything, the next time possibly doing some kind of a prize. Um, I did include a letter of recognition that they could keep, um, for whatever purposes that they did do the contest and what they placed. So they each got an email with a document in it.
And that's nice. I was gonna say, cause I, you know, even with the Black History Month, they give out gift cards and, and different things. And it doesn't have to be monetary, but like a gift card.
Yeah. And you know, the other thing too, with, with Black History Month, we were, we would have a group of people. It was a different setting. You know, their parents were there and the mayor, they, they took their photograph with the mayor. And the photographs were in the newspaper and they, you know, got photographed to take with them. So it, that's part of it, I think, that we're, you know, you're missing when you're, when you're virtual. That's what happens. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we could. Very limited recognition, you know, we gave that. And we did have, we did get, um, in the permission slip. And we did have, we did get, um, in the permission slip, their parents had to sign permission that we can post this on Facebook, or the city, um, Amber Lepage, the city attorney wrote the, wrote that, um, release, so, so we can do that, you know, we can post their poems, but.
I ha, I have a question, is it too late for us to at least, um, I mean, they don't expect anything, and I guess, is it too late to just send them a gift card in the mail or something like that? And also, is, is it possible to at least get them not only recognize social media, but is it also possible to get them recognized in the paper? Is it still able to, are we still able to do that?
Yes, I would say we could do that, do a press release, um, about it, and, um, and I think we could still give them gift cards or some awards like that, even though we, I mean, we have the right to make that decision, and.
Of course.
We've finished in like five minutes.
Just, it'll be a good surprise, they, they're not expecting that, so.
Right, I, so I would need somebody to make a motion that we do give them a gift card, and possibly probably how much, um, the card should be.
Could we do a gift card for like local, like small businesses in our community?
Yes. I'm sorry.
Gift card for small businesses within our community to help.
Like, wha, well, I guess, I'm, I would just like to chime in on that, um, cause our small businesses, do we have anything that's school-related where they can pick up supplies for school or anything? I don't know if we really have a small business that will allow them to use it for educational purposes, I mean, I, cause me as a kid, I would want either gas card or.
Starbucks.
Walmart.
Walmart.
Yes, I mean.
You can also send, you can send virtual Amazon cards, um, through email, since we have those email addresses, that would be an easy way to push out, um, a gift card, um, while virtual.
And there are five students that won and that, uh, uh, read theirs, so if it was like, what, you took $25 or something for each, it's $125, and we have over, just over $19,000 in our, um, account right now, so.
Not bad.
Hate to get picky, but I'm going to ask, uh, how many first, how many were first prizes and second prizes?
We've had, um, one, two, three first prizes and two second prizes.
And they, and they were all excellent, they really were.
So maybe the first prize, this can get the $25, and maybe the prize can give me a $10 gift certificate, I mean, $10, um, certificate or something.
Well, Sarah, that's a great idea with Amazon, I also know that Starbucks, you can send virtual gift cards as well.
Yeah.
Well, I wonder, can you for Walmart or something, that the kids might have more fun at? Does anyone know?
I think all of them.
My teenagers really like Amazon.
Yeah, most of the kids like Amazon.
Oh, okay.
They do, they.
Mine would prefer Amazon over Walmart, I think.
My grandchildren would too.
Yeah, my kids.
You can get everything on Amazon, so.
So you all have three first place and two second place winners?
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
So how about we do the 25 for the first place and 15 even for the second place?
I agree with that.
That's fine.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion for the 25 for first place and 15 for second place. Sir, gift certificate.
I'll.
Who's second?
Christina.
Christina?
Or Christina, I don't care.
I'm sorry, Nicole? Did you both, you both seconded or what? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm so, say whatever, okay, thank you. So the motion passed. That we would get, um, um, 25 for the first place and 15 for the second place, winners of the poetry contest. Uh, Amazon gift cards are, I wouldn't do it.
Yeah. Uh, could I ask Sarah though, did, um, did you find out an email address for, uh, Rayland and Raiden? Because they didn't have one on their application.
I did, um, I couldn't get through, I had to do some tracking, I couldn't get through on the, the phone number, um, successfully, so I ended up getting in contact with a teacher, and giving the teacher my information, and the parent reached out to me, so I have an email address for them now.
Oh, good, okay.
Thank you, Sarah.
We could do that.
Okay, now, I, cause I think that would encourage them next year to participate, um, on the next level, and also their friends, tell their friends about it, and make it real, real competitive.
Yes.
So anything else for the good of the order, cause I need to get to another Zoom.
Me too.
How will the, um, Amazon gift cards be ordered, and, and will Char do that? Or we don't have any credit card or anything for the commission, how do we? What are the logistics?
I believe she would still probably have to go through the city, uh, controller's office, and we would have to submit a le, probably a letter to the city controller, um, specifying, I can get that, draft that letter up, um, for the city controller, that, and, and want a copy about minutes, and, um, and I think they, they can handle that.
Well, let me know. Let me know if they have an issue, um, buying, buying the, uh, gift cards online. If they have an issue, cause if, if so, I can always purchase them and, and get reimbursed, so if we need to do that, just find out how they would want to do that, cause you're gonna have to have them emailed directly to.
I would also volunteer to even pick up gift cards and deliver them if need be, if that is a last resort.
Yep, cause we could get, um, Amazon from, uh, CBS or Walmart or wherever too, but if we can't get them electronically.
Okay, so Sarah, I'll get back in touch with you after I talk with, um, uh, City Hall, as to how they'll be distributed. Cause it has to go through, uh, City Hall, cause we don't have any funds about in our possession.
No problem.
Okay. Any, anything else for the good of the Women's Commission? I do want to say that the, uh, Naomi Anderson Celebration has come along real well, and, um, we're gonna be, we're even planning something for Juneteenth to, um, to build up the momentum to when we actually unveil, um, the artist's re, rendering. So, um, so I will keep you guys posted on that, and it's coming real well, thank you.
And Kayla has joined us again.
So, okay, I guess he's joining us to find out, are we ready to close out?
Um, Kayla just arrived again, just rejoined the meeting. Oh, 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 she is here.
Oh, okay, so we have, we have questions, how we got, um, so we wanted to know, did you need additional $300 for the, uh, shipping of the vehicle?
Oh.
And.
That would be absolutely incredible.
You didn't have, um, you hadn't raised the funds elsewhere for that.
Not yet, no, we're in the process of trying to do that.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Okay, so what was our secretary, what was our final decision on that?
We didn't.
Secretary.
Uh, we motioned to approve the five, the original $500, the shipping.
And we wanted to know how, um, how, you said something about you were in the process of doing a fundraiser. What type of fundraiser were you in the process of doing, and who was helping you with the fundraiser?
So I'm in an honors capstone class with Purdue right now, with Dr. Mary Beth Connolly, um, who's a local historian, and she was going to help me set up a GoFundMe page on her Facebook. We had a meeting this afternoon to discuss that.
Their decision made?
She is currently checking with the history department at Purdue Northwest to make sure that she's able to do that, but hopefully that she can help any way that she could.
Okay, so it was just gonna be a personal fundraiser by, by the professor if you could. Yeah, cause I know there's rules and regulations at the university about that, so, um, so that's just kinda if, if she can.
Correct.
Okay.
If you can, Kayla, you should, if you do end up getting a GoFundMe page, um, you should write to us and let us know what the account is, unless any of the individuals here want to donate to it?
Absolutely, I will, thank you.
Okay, all right, any other questions about the fundraising?
What is your timeframe, you have to pay for it, because, um, cause it sounds like you need the $300, and you're looking for opportunities to get it, so I'm just trying to find out, is there a timeline that you have to have the funds, uh, to, uh, for the payment?
So with the exhibit opening in, uh, the 1st of May, um, we're trying to have all of the artifacts here, um, the last week of April. Um, and so I would, once I hear back from my professor, I'll let the collector know, but we'd have to pay him probably by early April to make the transport happen. Um, but she's talking also to different department heads, like the English Department at PNW and the History Department, to see if there are other grants that we can apply for.
All right, so we would like for you to keep us, um, posted, and, um, and we'll try to assist. And thank you for coming back, Bonnie.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thanks again, Kayla.
Have a wonderful evening.
You too, thank you.
Okay, so, um, if that's it, then we will go ahead and someone make a motion to adjourn?
We're going to vote on, um, a motion to give the additional $300 to, do we need that?
So you want to go ahead and do that, I thought. I guess we should.
Was that covered in, that wasn't covered in the first?
No, 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 that wasn't, just the 500. So what do you, what's the discussion, let's have a discussion on that? Is everybody in favor of, uh, giving the additional contract, or waiting to see what the professor comes up with?
I mean, she also needs extra for the other artifacts, right? Cause she said that they were gonna be bringing other things, I don't remember, sorry.
I think the 800 covers the, um, a little bit, covers, covers the transportation for the artifacts, and that includes the car, that's the way I understood it.
Yeah, and then she's also raising funds to help digitize all her films, all her films, so she has.
Yeah, so those are two different.
Yep, so she hasn't raised any additional funds, I think that's why, uh, that's why I asked those questions. I think she's trying to raise money for other things as well. Um, so.
Yeah, she probably has to purchase, um, some of those artifacts, actually. She, she had listed costumes, and I can't remember what all, but there were several items that they were.
Right, there was.
Yeah.
Yeah, some of those artifacts, I thought she said, uh, was being donated by the, the aunt, or.
A niece, I think, a great niece or something, it was a relative.
Yes. So I think we should wait until March, and then we, and we can, we can, if she hasn't got the GoFundMe account or whatever, then I think we could go ahead and, and make a motion to, um, to, to donate the, the 300. See where she's at with it by March.
Yeah, and she's already, yeah, and she already received the 500, so she received that last year, so that's right, yeah.
Well, I think we have a lot of questions, and we could bring them up next time, the organizing.
Okay, all right, so, um, can we close out tonight? Yeah, I'm sorry, Angie?
No, I was saying I'd have to go.
Yeah, okay, so we'll see you next month, and, um, let's keep in touch and stay safe. Okay. Thank you, bye.
Bye.
Move to adjourn.
Oh, yeah.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor? Bye. Bye.